Welcome back to Solomon's Porch with your host Jason.
Oh, I thought you were gonna introduce him first. You you wanted me to go next?
Yeah. I saved the best for last.
See now it it just feels like it's awkward. It's like it's too late.
I saved the best for last.
You've now overshadowed me.
Yeah.
That's okay though.
Oh wow, see now I feel even worse. Like i- it's awkward, but now I also feel guilty. I I took the spotlight away. No, go ahead.
Welcome back to the show. Mister, uh, we got Mister Kevin Donovan with us. Uh, he's been on the show. If you listen to the podcast, you've heard his voice. But we are, uh, we're gonna be talking about, uh, him running for school board.
Yes.
Uh, which is incredible. I've always felt like we definitely need Christians in every area, uh, in the world. Whether it's an office of some sort, politics, schools, anywhere.
I I I would like to say real quick, so it it, you know, for any of our listeners, uh, or viewers. Um, you know, he he's he's not gonna try to explain to you why you need to vote for him because obviously like. Yeah, well, you you can't right now anyway, but also I I don't think that there's anybody that listens to the show that's probably local enough anyway. To be able to vote for.
Well, if Kevin shares it with people.
But 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 you know, just understand that that's not, that's not the reason for this. So you know, we we wanna talk about it from, uh, running for for school board from a Christian perspective. And, uh, and and we feel like Kevin's just got really great perspective on this, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, uh, and I I and as I told Kevin kinda off air, uh, I've had several conversations with you. I've never felt like you were disrespectful for anybody who might even view differently than you do. Uh, which is great, and I think that's the way Christians should approach politics if they're gonna approach it at all.
However, if you thought that Spider-Man No Way Home was like one of the top three MCU movies. Then you're probably not on the brightest scale of folks that are out there, so.
I haven't seen it, it's not.
So, uh, so Kevin, first, I just gotta ask me, what was it that drove you? Because you said in the, uh, in the, in the, the top five blessings segment. That you didn't plan on running for office. Uh, so what was it that kinda pushed you in that direction?
Yeah, so let's take it back to, uh, twenty twenty when schools got shut down.
Okay.
And, uh, we were sent home to work. I had the blessing, I'd say that with eye rolling. To sit behind my daughter to watch her do virtual schooling.
Okay.
If any parent has sat behind a kid to watch her or kid do virtual schooling, it was a disaster. Um, a- and it wasn't just because it was new. It was just like, where's the common sense in a lot of this? So then I started paying attention to the school board meetings, and then the common sense started going away even further. And it seems like the higher you get up the chain, the less common sense you have to have to make these implementations, so, uh.
Definitely, definitely agree. You're not getting any arguments here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, once I saw that, really wanted to reach out to other parents. That was the, the original intent. Reach out to other parents and say, we need to get together and go to the school board and say, you guys are not doing. It's the right thing. You guys are making some horrible choices. Have you even reached out to any virtual schools to see how they do it?
Right.
Um, I I mean, we're talking kids sitting in front of a screen letting a book read to them without them actually even reading the words. And I'm talking second, third grade type stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and and so it's i- it's not necessarily, uh, being against virtual learning, but as much as the implementation. Or lack thereof.
Yeah, the choices made, um, the resources that are reached out to because you can't jump into a virtual school. And just automatically know what to do. It's best if you have the resources to help you. And there's so many people willing to help, and we found that out when I created a Parents for Johnston County Public School System Facebook group. And, uh, so a lot of parents jumped in immediately, started sharing stories, started reading stories about what these kids are going through. Um, and I said, something's gotta change. So, uh, the intent was to get the parents together. And now it's turned into, hey, somebody's gotta do this. And, uh, I guess it's me. And I'm cool with it.
I think it's cool, man. I know it, there's, there's a lot of issues, eh, even in the, I guess, the, the church. In the world, and even in church, we see problems, but we always wanna look for other people to take care of it.
Right.
It's like, this is an issue, somebody needs to fix it, and everybody's looking around, and it's almost like the issue with the.
Matthew S. Song, I sent you.
Yeah, yeah. And so, but it, but it seems that the incidents or that, you know. I don't know if it's a popular thing, I think it's a popular thing, but like if you're in a crowd of a thousand people and you're having a heart attack, point at one person and tell them, hey, call the police. Call the ambulance because nobody else will. I think sometimes our, our country or, or in the world, but even in the church, we do that. We're like. This is a, this is a problem. I see these issues, and everybody knows what the issues are, they know what the problems are. But they're looking for somebody else to take the lead.
Yeah, and I think as, as parents for the school board, uh, or schools in general, we've got really comfortable. We've sat back and we just said, okay, the schools, the schools got it. And what we're realizing is the school doesn't have it.
Right.
They don't have any of it. Um, so we're, we're learning a lot. We're bringing up issues at the school board. Um, and making some good changes, uh, but it seems like the, the deeper we go, the more disturbing it gets.
Well, and and a lot of those issues, my, my wife's a first grade teacher. Um, it, it, you know, we're talking about parents, we're talking also about teachers. That aren't being listened to or aren't being consulted on anything. You know, nobody's asking them, well, what do you guys think about this? How do you think this is going to affect the children?
And I'll, I'll go even further than that. A lot of the teachers are scared.
Yeah.
To speak out because they're scared they're gonna lose their job. I can't tell you how many messages I've gotten, hey, I love what you're posting. I love to comment. But there's principals watching, the school boards watching, and if we say one thing that goes against their narrative, then we're out of a job.
Yeah, or, or you, you can't get moved to another location, you'll get, you know, kind of relegated, uh, certain stuff. Yeah, there's all sorts of repercussions for teachers to actively speak out, yeah.
The key word I've heard from teachers lately is micromanaged.
Yeah.
They don't feel like they can do their unique skill. You know, when we, I I don't know about y'all, but when I went to school. Our teachers had a unique skill to connect to the students, and that's what made that teacher so great. Eh, a lot of the teachers now feel like they don't even have the ability to give that uniqueness out.
The, the opportunity.
Right, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree, I agree. So.
In the process, what was the, the beginning portion like? Do you, do you call the school board, say, hey, I wanna run for school board? Like, how, 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 how does that logistically work out?
Yeah, so I mean, you have to announce, right? So you say, you know, you're gonna run for school board. Typically, it's in a public setting.
Okay.
Um, and then you'll go and file at the, at the Board of Elections.
So you can't just stand out in the middle of an office and say, I declare Board of Education?
I mean, you can, but they probably look at you kinda weird.
Okay.
Well, no, and Kevin did it at Bojangles, right?
Well, yeah, in Princeton.
More of a public setting than that, I'm just saying. Bojo and J. Co., I'm just saying, that's it, or J. Co.
So we're supposed to, we were supposed to file this past, um, let's say, a couple weeks ago. And, um, I guess there was some lawsuit or something, so now it's shifted. They, they stopped it. They shifted it to March. So it's a lot of confusion right now. Um, and as both of you know, the devil plays in confusion. So there's a lot going on right now where people are trying to figure out what's going on, what's the plan. We don't know if it's March. It might be July. You might file in July and have to vote, you know, twice.
Right.
Like at the end of July and then voting for in November. So.
Wow.
There's a lot of miscommunication right now that we're worried about.
Yeah, so it's like, do you feel like there's, like, trying to block other people from trying to enter the system? Or do you think it's just the system sucks and it's just a natural?
The system really sucks. No, I don't, I always like to give everybody the, the benefit of the doubt.
Right.
I don't like to think that anybody's trying to, to cheat or anything like that. I wouldn't like to think that. But in, in the real world, there are some, some bad things that go on.
Well, well, here in, uh, uh, you know, Swan County, Overland County has had a, a, a lot of theft within the school board. So, I mean, it, it, it definitely happens, you know, and so for s- for people to look out for their own interests. And to manipulate whatever they can to be able to help further that is not terribly surprising.
Yeah, there's a reason why it's called public servants. You're not serving yourself.
Yeah.
I mean, these, these guys aren't getting a ton of money. You're serving the people.
And unless you're stealing it.
Yeah, that's true.
That never happens. Never happens.
I just said it happened in Lane County. Weren't you listening?
No, I wasn't.
Trust me, it's gone on in Johnston County as well.
I was reading the No Way Home reviews. Not yours, not yours.
Not mine? Okay, so you weren't reading anything worthwhile?
No, no. Um, so as far as, as far as school board, i- i- is that a, um. Longing of the word, uh, Democrat, public, Republican, or is it?
Political party.
It's not, it's not party affiliated, no.
So when you run, you just, you run on your own, your own platform? There's nothing else to?
That's right.
Okay. Well, I mean, is, do you consider that a good thing? Is it?
Well, realistically, it's, it's gotten political.
Okay.
Within the past, within the past couple of years.
Does people involve, does politics involve?
That's right, yeah. Um, but what you're really for are for the kids and the teachers.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not looking to draw lines as far as politics.
Well, that's what you should be for.
Right, yeah. So in, in my case, I talked to both of them. I talked to Republicans, I talked to Democrats. Because surprisingly enough, when it comes to their kids, they agree on a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that in, in people's minds, they don't think they do. But just to sit down and talk with another person that's on a complete different aisle is, is pretty interesting. I think that a lot of people should do it.
But as for the rest of us, the registered independents, we disagree with everybody. We just want a school.
And that's okay. We love you too. But we're gonna fix the school system and you can put your kid back in.
Yeah, she's graduated.
Well, I guess technically she is in the public school system.
Yeah, yeah, technically she is, yeah, community college.
There you go. So.
Oh, my taxes do pay for it too. She's, she's got financial aid, yeah.
I will knock on the community college. I went to Wayne Community College.
Yeah.
That's what's wrong with it. No, we can't vote for it.
Dude, I graduated. I have a degree from there too.
I do too. I do too. I would have too, but we'll go. No, we'll move along, move along. So whenever the, uh, so when. One thing whenever I was looking a long time ago, whenever I lost my mind, and before I found it, uh, I was gonna try to run for public off, or I was. So I was looking, so I was looking like, you know, local house representative, stuff like that. Um, and I know for that, like, they were like, you gotta have like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm like, why do you have to bring so much money? Like, is there, i- is it similar? Like, do you, do you have to raise funds to run for office or, or no?
So if you want to pay, I mean, if you wanna get your name out, obviously.
For advertisement.
Yeah, advertisement. So the school board isn't as much.
Okay.
I think it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars to file.
Oh, okay.
But, um, eh, you can raise funds. I don't, I'm not a big fan of having people donate money. Because I feel like my hands might be tied to somebody.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't ask for any money, only support, whether it's, uh, vocally or, you know, just helping door knocking, stuff like that. So, um, it's, it's quite a bit of work.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine.
It takes quite a bit of money as well, but it's fun. So when my kids were born, you know, eh, you both have kids. You're, you say to yourself, I'm gonna do everything to make sure my kid has everything better than I do.
Sure.
Better education, better life, and in this instance, it's education. So I wanna make sure my kids have everything they, they can possibly have the best.
So a question for you. We are in a world, uh, where even, even atheists are pulling kids out of public school and homeschooling them. So what makes you lean the path of, I wanna go serve in a public school setting? And not just, okay, I'm gonna pull my kids away from that crap and homeschool them. I'm not saying either what I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying homeschooling is wrong. I think it's a very, very great thing, uh, if you choose to do that, but.
Right.
You're, you're obviously not choosing to go that route.
Yeah, so public school, number one, my tax money already goes there.
Okay.
So I, I wanna make sure that I'm getting the most bang for my buck. If I'm spending the money, that's where I want my kids. If it's not right, it needs to be fixed. So that's why I'm jumping in to fix it.
Gotcha. Yeah, I know so many people that, that, I know a lot of people personally who are really debating on. Uh, do I leave my kids in public school or do I, well, homeschool them? And you know, I think some people are like, well, I want my kids to be the Christian influence in their school, and some people are like, I wanna protect my kids from, from the enemy. So it's, it's a, it's a awkward thing, like, you know, what do Christians do? And, uh, and I don't think there is a right answer there. I just think whatever you feel like God is.
Really supported both of it inside of our Facebook group. We've had a lot of people come out and say, hey, we're experts in homeschooling. If you wanna homeschool, we're here for you.
Oh, cool.
So we've, we've had those people, and if you wanna homeschool, totally support it. But, um, if, if you want your kids in the public school, not every parent can afford private school. Not every parent can quit their job. To do, to do homeschool. I know I can't.
Right.
Um, so I, I think that's where their kids enter, is the public school realm, and we need to fix that. We need to fix the public school realm.
You, you know, an interesting perspective, um, that I had never thought about before, uh, until one of my neighbors had mentioned it to me. That every single one of us pays for the public school system. That means that even when you're seventy-seven years old, eighty-seven years old, you ain't got kids. Maybe you never even had children. You're still paying for public education. So your money's still going into the system. And you haven't the availability to be able to help decide how those funds are utilized. And you actually probably have more of a direct voice and influence in that than in a lot of other areas where you're taxed. And you don't have any control over how the government utilizes those funds. So if nothing else, this is a great opportunity. And I've always encouraged voting anyway, but, uh, definitely for the school board is, is definitely very powerful. Um, because you can influence what happens there. So, and, and why not? You know, we were in a unique position to where we could homeschool. Um, I was not employed in a, in a traditional kinda job anyway. At the time, and so I had the availability to be able to take my daughter to work and, and begin that homeschool process. Um, so y- you know, people's reasons for homeschooling are just a huge spectrum for it. Um, and it didn't really impact us in terms of, um, financially speaking. Uh, so that, that wasn't a really big concern. I know some folks, eh, it's a concern and they can't afford it. Um, but for us, eh, 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 it actually worked out and, um, flowed nicely for us. But it's just not the case for everybody. You know, I, I mentioned that my wife's a first grade teacher. And, and she's a teacher in a low income school, so we're talking about a lot of parents that work at least one job. If not, some cases, single parents that work two jobs.
Right.
And, you know, we hate to think of schools as being the babysitters, so that way mom and dad or mom can, or just dad could go to work. But in a way, yes, that's true, but at the same time, the kids still need the education as well. So when we think about that, we think about w- what all is required to be able to make that happen for them. And how do we best execute that? And that's just one small percentage of, of, of children. What about all the other children and all the other scenarios and those other things? And that's where, um, you know, a lot of the cookie cutter decisions that end up, uh, getting made. Really, it, it becomes moronic. You sit back and you, and you go, wha- wait a second. You've got all these other kids that don't fit this. You're only looking at this one little section. What about everybody else that's in your county or within your school district, you know? Anyway, sorry.
So question, uh, kinda going back to, to the job, uh, as, you know. Uh, what's a board dress?
I do wanna say real quick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, eh, at one time, schools were looked at as education centers, not babysitters.
Right.
But it has twisted to that, that babysitter mentality.
Almost definitely.
Yeah, so we've gotta go back to, we need to prepare kids through the K through twelve section of their grade schools. To have them prepared for life after school. Not in college. They need to be ready to step out and work. Because not college isn't for everybody.
Right.
I didn't care to go to college, but my dad said he'd kick me out if I didn't. No, um, I, I think that, uh, having the trade schools.
Right.
At, at the, at the, at the schools, preparing them for ha- money and how to manage it, because I got no financials teaching.
That is one of my biggest pet peeves, eh, is that y- you've got these, these young people that are leaving, uh, high school. And don't know how to deal with money at all.
Yep.
So, you know, we're surprised that they have credit card debt, we're surprised that they're in trouble with the IRS and can't pay tax. What on earth? Because we didn't prepare them properly. Now, I, I will say, I think in part that's somewhat parents' responsibilities. But if we already know that part of the problem is that the parents don't know how to do it either, then how can we expect the kids to be able to learn it?
I mean, you're talking our generation, our raising kids, and we didn't have the schooling for, for the financial in, in high school or, or college even. So we have to reach out and learn it on ourselves, and, and, you know, not everybody's gonna do that. So there are so many resources now, even Dave Ramsey, he's got his curriculum in some high schools. That, uh, that teach kids how to manage their money, and I, I think it's a major, uh, thing to do.
Yeah, well, so you, you mentioned about, um, that parents have more so begun to see, uh. The public school system as a babysitting service. Eh, is, is part of the issues that we're experiencing within public school system. Um, d- does it rest on the shoulder of parents?
It. So i- it's a mix, right? There's a responsibility for teachers to educate the kids. It's a responsibility of the kids not to disturb the classroom so the kids can learn. So it does fall on some of the parents to, to make sure their kids are disciplined, to, to sit in class. Not cause disturbances, because you're talking, we were just at our school system, right, doing a parent advisory type deal. And they brought up a graph. Did you know in a school system, your kid only spends twelve percent of their time actually in school learning?
I totally believe that.
Twelve percent. That's all they get. And then when they leave the school, are they learning or are they sitting on YouTube? You know, just hanging out at home. So that twelve percent is major for your kid's development. So we need to make sure that twelve percent kids are learning, they're not being distracted. So i- it kinda falls on both. Parents, parents have the responsibility to make sure their kids are, are decent in the classroom. Um, and not causing distractions, and then it's on the, the teachers to hold the kids responsible for their actions.
Well, and, and, and part of that, I would say, is that, um, it's also what the teachers have the availability to do. So what are they empowered to be able to do in the classroom, to be able to maintain that, that, that civil, uh, environment? As well as, um, what are they able to do in terms of really being able to educate? Sometimes I know my wife comes home and she's like, man, they're making us do this, and they're making us do this, and they're making us do this, and. And it, and it, it's all just ridiculous redundancy or, 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 you know, uh, o- other things that just don't even apply. For these kids, and I'm not able to actually give them what their focus, what they're really needing. You know, she's, she's got, you know, these, these are first graders, so we're, we're talking about kids that last year went to kindergarten online. So their language skills are pretty much non-existent.
They're coming in, teaching kindergarten.
Yeah, they, they, they really are. So they're, they're doing twice the work in a way, and they're being bogged down with all these other restrictions and things. Um, that.
Red tape.
It's very bureaucratic. And so, y- you know, it's, it. I, I, I think that that's where, you know, your point comes into play is that, you know, yes, the, the parents have to discipline the children. Make sure that they're, they're behaving po- uh, properly in, in classrooms. Um, and I thi- I believe that there's also additional education that should come from parents as well. Um, that we rely too heavily on the school system to do. Um, sex ed is one of those pet peeves of mine. But then also, um, the, the teacher's job of being able to educate, but then if we tie their hands, they can't educate.
Yep.
So who's tying their hands? And that's where we get into the school board.
Yeah, so a, a lot of it is, um, not having the ability. So eh, there was a, a comic, I'm sure you guys have seen it. A while back, it was the teacher calls the parent, hey, your kid's being destructive in the classroom, there's an issue. And the parent's looking at the kid saying, hey, you need to straighten up. And now, the new, the new one is, the teacher calls the parent and says, hey, your kid is being a distraction in the classroom. And the t- and the parent is yelling back at the teacher, well, what are you gonna do about it?
Fix my kid.
Yeah, exactly. We have gone the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, um, there's obviously so many issues that.
It is. You can pick a plethora of things.
Sure.
So what are some things that, uh, as head of the, the school board, that you would be able to do? Like what are, what are some changes or what are areas that you can influence or change or be, uh, kinda more hands-on with? When it comes to the public school system?
Yeah, so you can't obviously go in and fix these items yourself. You have to work as a team. Um, so.
So you're like the president of Johnston County Schools?
Yeah, and you have, so you have seven, seven people that you're working with, right? And a lot of them up there are good people. Um, they're just not making the choices that I would make. Uh, so eh, the first thing that really bothers me is politics in schools. Um, eh, anytime you insert any kind of political arena into a school system, it becomes a problem. Um, it's, it's been all over the news, uh, obviously, between.
How so do you mean?
Uh, let's take for instance, um, a local school system where kids are bringing in certain flags, uh, political flags.
Okay.
Causing issues between, uh, types of people. Um, a- and all it does is it causes more flame or mo- more fuel to the fire. For kids to be distracted in the classroom. Um, and, and that's where, uh, a lot of the mask mandates, eh, you know, a lot of that gets political. And it causes kids to be distracted. Um, they should be in their learning, um, the, just the basic things. Math, English, um, STEM. So getting the politics out is, is the major thing, and you can do that through policy. We've implemented policies for, for CRT, for divisive language, making sure that kids can focus on the basics. So we, we need to definitely get that out.
How, um, i- is the Department of Instruction much of a, an obstacle? For folks that serve on the school board? Or how much involvement do you have with DPI?
Hmm, I would have to look into it, but eh, as far as Department of Instruction, I'm not.
So eh, I, I know the DPI is, is obviously very involved with, uh, the teachers. And, and as to what the teachers are required to do and what they're required to teach, yeah.
I can tell you right now that the teachers are having their books, their curriculum books set on their desk. And they said, day one, they can't even have fun as far as, you know. Typically, day one, the kids introduce themselves and they have fun and they play or whatever. No, it's down to business, and you've gotta stay on track. And there's checkpoints, and you need to make sure you're hitting them. So it's very corporate, business-like. You need to be here.
And, and so how much influence do you have in regards to that?
So that's, that's state, right?
Yeah.
So I think that you can voice your opinion. I don't think that our school board is voicing their opinion. And their strength in numbers, so they have the ability to reach out to other counties. We're doing it. We've started. Our, um, our chapters for Facebook groups in Harnett County. We just started one in Wilson County. Um, so they can reach out to other school boards and raise your voice and say, look, these teachers are not doing what they need to be doing.
Yeah.
They're following a curriculum, and, and that's okay. There needs to be a curriculum, but they don't need to feel like they're micromanaged. And they're on every day, they have to be somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, i- it, it seems like, uh, the Department of Edi- uh, of Instruction is always hearing, griping and complaining from teachers. To the point that they've become deaf to them, and so tha- that, that's why I was wondering, how much does the school board have in terms of influencing DPI as well?
Yeah, eh, I think raising the voice and, and, and almost forcing it, because I think once one person stands up. Or one group stands up, say one school board, two, three, a lot more are gonna stand up. You're talking Johnston County, you know, Union County's the same way. They're against a lot on the curriculum, but I, I think that.
It sounds like they, a- and, and this is, you know, I, I used to have an issue with micromanaging, being micromanaged.
Yeah.
Uh, it's like, you know, you don't need to really know how to teach, you just need to know how to teach this. You just gotta.
Yep.
Read this, just do this verbatim. You don't really need to know how to do anything else. Like, and I feel like teachers go and, you know, some go into debt, but either way, they go into college for a period of time to learn how to teach. Not how to just administer tests. I have heard teachers say that their job ideally is just to get students to pass this test. That's it.
Yeah.
The whole job, the whole year is, hey, we need, we need them to pass this.
They just need to memorize this, so they can pass the test. After that, we don't care if they remember it or not.
Yeah.
And, and that's because that's based on their performance of per grade level by school. And whether or not the school gets funding as well as, uh, whether or not teachers get to keep their jobs as well. Whether or not the school gets funding as well as uh whether or not teachers get to keep their jobs as well. So eh if if a teacher. Actually is more concerned about, let me try to get this kid to understand these basic concepts. And that this is going to help them tremendously in life, eh bump that. We we just need him to be able to regurgitate something long enough on a test so that way it looks good. My my wife has had had struggled with that with with teachers on the same grade level. And she's like, I just give them worksheets, I just make them do this and then you know, when they go to test and and I just. I i- it's frustrating because not every kid fits the same mold.
And that's exactly how Johnston County has come from the top three to the bottom three. Those those theories right there.
And and that's sad because quite frankly, Johnston County has always been held up pretty high.
Oh yeah, absolutely. We've been part of the the goal, really. Um even when I was in school, we worked part of the top and it it schooling was great. Um and now I'm seeing what these kids are learning and it's just checkpoints, really. Can you hit this mark? Yes or no? And they're tested every month, it seems like. Seems like every month my my daughter is going through some kind of test. So i- it's not, are these kids learning and retaining? It's can we get them to pass the test? Can we show that they're moving ahead?
Yeah, yeah. So if you were to give us a a a campaign right now, what would be kind of your your top? Three areas that you're concerned about that you really wanna to go in there and make a difference on if possible?
Yeah, so um first one, keeping the politics out was was the big one. And then um we need to make sure that our budget. Uh which was fully fully funded this year, um and some, we need to make sure that money is spent wisely. We've got a lot of schools that are older, that are running on the minimum, even HVACs. That need to be brought up to date with these newer schools that are being built. Um and and speaking of the newer schools, we've got uh a lot of people flooding in from Wake County. Uh which is great, but we're creating cookie cutter schools that are the same, one-story schools. That can only fit so many people. Um Triple S was built way back and it's three stories. We need to implement uh more schools like that so we can handle the influx of kids that are coming in. Not just looking at how many kids are currently in the county, but with Amazon coming in, Apple's coming in. We need to make sure we can build these schools.
Johnston County is is definitely become a bedroom, if you will, for Raleigh.
Yeah, it really has. And and taking care of the teachers, uh I mean, if you haven't, I don't know if you guys have looked, but there's over four hundred job openings. In Johnston County at the public school system. We need eh they're leaving to go to better paying jobs. Whether it's teaching or not, let's just be honest. We need to make sure we're paying these teachers what they deserve because the hours they put in. Equals up to probably being a minimum wage job.
Yeah, so would that be, would that be a state? Like you having to influence the state on that?
So you, so the state gives a certain amount of money and the county supplements as well. So they and they have, they have helped this past meeting. Um but there's definitely some more room for helping these teachers.
And Johnston County is pretty much always been very well known for paying their teachers better than a lot of other surrounding counties. I I mean, because teachers in Wilson and Wayne, they're always looking for jobs in Johnston County because it pays better.
And now I'm now I'm hearing that teachers in Johnston County are looking in Wayne. And it's like, oh my gosh.
No, that's scary. That is straight scary.
To step it up.
Especially when they lost like five million dollars. Y'all five million short, I still wanna come work for you.
But I've even, I mean, I've talked to teachers in other counties. I mean, they've reached out to me, even Wayne County. Um at some schools and and to hear what their schools are like. It'll break your heart to know that you're sending your kid somewhere that isn't the same standard as your own house.
Well, you you mentioned uh heating and air, you know, the HVAC systems. How how do we expect these children to be able to learn when they're sweating to death or or freezing? You know, they have to bundle up in coats and gloves because there's not enough heat to be able to circulate throughout the building. And 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 this isn't making it up, this really happens. You you know, eh eh you'd almost imagine that we're. You know, borderline third world country kind of situation. And and there's really no excuse for this, there really isn't.
Yeah, I mean, even a school right down the road, they say, you know, my daughter's on a dance team. And kids from other schools come and they're like, Mr. Kevin, you wouldn't believe there's ants crawling all over the floor. I'm like, that basic?
Fleas in the gym.
This is, that's not acceptable.
I've always been, whenever we, you know, and not to, you know. Not not jumping into politics, but I don't remember if it was the last election we had or one before that, but there were there were, you know. It was a voting of whether or not to increase the taxes to pay for schools. I said, yes. I was like, uh if we're gonna raise the budget, public budget on anything, it needs to be schools. Like absolutely, it's across the board, whether it's for administration, teachers, facilities, whatever it is, I'm all for it.
Well, and you know, in in talking about that, the one of the big issues lately for um. Wake County has been paying for um quality bus drivers. I've seen those buses. I know what goes on in those buses. I've had family members that have driven those buses. And I don't blame them. Eh eh again, it goes back to how are these children being raised, but that's just it is eh if if you're not going to raise your children in a way that they're gonna be respectful. And then they're gonna get onto this bus and then you're gonna stranglehold uh anybody else from being able to. To be able to manage those situations, then person driving the bus is gonna go nuts.
Whatever you think is happening in the school is times two on the bus.
Oh, easy.
So eh there's a lot of um direction we have to go for the bus drivers, even in Johnston County.
High school buses are like dangerous. Your your kid's gonna come back pregnant and high. You know, I mean, it's just, it's nuts.
Definitely high, definitely high. On my bus, everybody was in the back smoking.
Oh yeah, and that was, that was back then. What's going on now? You know, that was back when we didn't have phones that played, you know, we didn't learn a lot. Now you've got all this information.
Yeah, I don't know. I it's it's such a different world. And uh and I think one of the things that, you know, probably a lack of of school board or whatever is uh. Is learning how to adjust and make adjustments where they have to be made because there are some things you're just not gonna keep, you're not gonna keep cell phones out of schools. It's not gonna happen. You gotta find a way to implement them somehow, some way, some form. Uh I think there are some things like memorization just isn't gonna work good anymore. Like, I mean, just telling kids to remember history historic dates for all these wars and battles and this, that and the other. Tell the story, teach the lessons. But I mean, force them, that that was my issue was like history. Like, I could tell you about what happened and why it happened, but if you're gonna give me an F because I don't remember what day of the week and year.
Well, eh eh however.
He's a history buff.
However, however, there are some dates seventeen seventy-six. If there is no other date that eh eh any student within. The United States of America grows up, comes up through our public school system should ever know when they leave, it's seventeen seventy-six. I I don't, I I don't care if you know anything else, se- just that year. Is is the bare bone minimum of a date that you should definitely have off the top of your head like.
Even if you're, I mean, US history seventeen seventy-six, you should know that.
That's it. I I I mean, but then then you see those those shows where they're like out on the street somewhere and they walk up to somebody. You know, they're at a crowded beach or something and say, alright, well, what was significant back in seventeen seventy-six? Um was that when Columbus sailed the ocean blue? And you're like, oh, you moron. This, there there's, there's just hands down, nothing else. I I I mean, I understand if you don't remember how World War One started. It it's it's kind of convoluted. Even if you don't remember the year that it started, y- you know, some fundamentals of it, that's fine. That's that that's that's probably sufficient enough. So that way we learn not to repeat history, you you know, for for those sakes, but.
That's why I say the, I feel like lessons learned are good, but the dates still don't matter. Seventeen seventy-six, the year. Doesn't really matter.
It does. It it is on your flag. It is on your state flag. You ought to know what that is.
What year was the Christian flag made? That's what I wanna know.
It it doesn't matter. It's a religious symbol and not a biblical concept anyway.
So I'll go one step further. The the biggest thing in in, I'm trying not to be too political, but the biggest thing in the news is the CRT. And what parents do and don't wanna learn.
CRT stand for?
Critical Race Theory? Okay, so a lot of people have got it misconstrued. It's gotten so convoluted. Where some people think that, you know, they don't want parent, the parents don't want their kids to learn about black history. And then the other parents are saying, well, we don't, we don't want our kids to be told that they were masters or whatever. It doesn't matter as long as it's factual and can be proven, it's history. Teach it. But don't teach kids that they should be oppressed or oppressors. They should be taught the facts. Um so I I I think.
It doesn't have to be glorified to be able to communicate it.
This happened. It sucked. We learn from it and we move on. That's one of the things between talking to the other side of the aisle. That we agree on. We agree it should be taught. We also agree that kids shouldn't be told whether they're oppressed or they're oppressors. We both agree on that, but somewhere in the mix, it gets convoluted.
And 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 that's the politics.
Yeah, and it it does. So yeah, it doesn't matter as long as it's factual and it can be proven, it's history. Teach it.
Eh you know, I had I had um, I I don't remember how the conversation went and you know, lesson learned. They always tell you there are certain things that you talk about mixed company. So I had I had uh made a comment to. Um a, let's see, what is he's a stepfather, eh I don't know anyway, the the guy that married my stepmom. He uh he he's very political. He he is a very proud Democrat. And when I had mentioned to him that um eh eh you know, I think it's kind of ironic that the Democrats. Have almost sort of switched around some of their roles and thinkings with Republicans. In 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 a in a more generalized sense, because now we have a Democratic, at that time, a Democratic um president that's African American. And at one point in time, the Democrats were actually largely supported, funded and organized with the KKK. And he was like, no, they weren't. That never happened. That is a lie. And 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 it's like.
Taken history.
He 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 took personal offense to it and it was like, look, I'm not saying that you're, you know, a Klansman or that you're. A racist or something, but thi- this is something that happened. And and frankly, I mean, it makes sense. If if you look at the political scene at that time, eh eh you know, I I mean, Democrats were always largely agriculturally based, you know? And so the people that lived in those areas had these thoughts and and feelings and so they. Were all the leaders of that time and that's what just happened. You you know, it it shouldn't be a surprise. So let's communicate that that's what happened. Let's go, oh, wow, that is kind of interesting, isn't it? You know, and and move on from it, you know, it's just, I don't, I'm sorry.
It's as simple as saying, look, this happened. It sucked. Let's just move forward. Let's not keep labeling or anything like that. Let's just keep going.
That's why I just like to say I'm libertarian because you can't tie me to anything.
I'm registered independent, so.
Yeah, so one of the um, one of the bigger things that I did touch on earlier was making sure our kids get get uh educated. Prepared for life after school, trade schools. They make good money.
That's right. We did ask them for three things, didn't we? I I totally forgot that that's what we did and that's where we were going.
I kinda weaved them in while we were talking earlier. So so yeah, I was touching on them earlier, but yeah, making sure that we can give some trade. Uh opportunities for kids. There's a lot of kids, there's a robotics program at uh Triple S. And those kids, uh uh eh eh I mean, it's pretty much half boys, half girls.
Um what is Triple S?
Smithfield-Telma High School. Where are you from?
Well, no, I'm just saying because the. Yeah, this is, you you could have anybody fr- frankly in the world.
Yeah, so they've got a robotics program and those kids are going to different states, cities. And they're competing, they're winning, they're learning. So there is a lot to be said about trade in the school system. Uh even the principal there wants more of it. Plumbing, HVAC, those are skills that uh a lot of it is flooded by the older generation. That the newer generation isn't picking up. So it's gonna be tough to find those skill sets if we don't implement them now.
And and we're not talking about jobs that are gonna be um outdated or outmoded by something. I mean HVAC.
Those are basic necessities for life.
Yeah, I I I mean, you you're still gonna have heating and air well into the future and somehow somebody or other. I mean. Okay, maybe there will be a robot that'll come and fix things, but who's gonna maintain the robots?
Yeah, who's gonna troubleshoot it? I mean, you can't scan a barcode and it tell you what's wrong.
Yeah, so you you know, and and HVAC's actually really good money.
Yes, they make over six figures. I mean, they make really good money. Um so I I have a family member that does HVAC and his big thing is. I can't find somebody to replace me. I'm ready to retire. I mean, he's he's got big accounts. And he is willing to teach somebody, but they they aren't, they just aren't coming in.
And 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 no offense, eh in in and I I don't mean this as an insult, but rather to be able to say that. You know, frankly, it's not rocket science. The this, this is a very reasonable trade for people to be able to to learn, to pick up. So for for folks that, like, when I went to school, I hated school. I did not do well in school until I got to college. Because then I was purposely going to school. So but up until then, I was being forced and I hated it and 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 I did my best to get out of it. So for those students that just don't perform well in school and definitely are not gonna be doing anything else. To know that I have an avenue that I can be educated in something that is, I feel like is within my means to be able to learn and do. And make good money yet, and start my own business? I mean, that's that's huge.
I'll I'll give credit to the public school for having this one class that had something to do with trade. We were able to do AutoCAD. We were able to do some drawing. That's what got me interested in engineering. I went to college for engineering. That's where I learned how to do the mechanical stuff, the CNC programming, the robotics, and that's what I do today. So it it pays really good and it gives you the opportunity to make that business. So now I have a golf cart company. If I didn't know thread types and and you know, the socket sizes and stuff like that, the mechanical aspects. Then I probably wouldn't have that business today.
Yeah, I I think a lot of times people think um wood shop and automotive class and 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 ma- and maybe farming.
We had some electrical trades in my, in my school, but they cut, it used to be like four classes for electrical trades, they cut it down to two. And I'm like, I wanted to go all the way with electrical trades because I knew that was a lucrative business. I knew it was important and that not everybody's just going to DIY electrical. And they cut the other program and I was just like, well, nah, nah, just.
Well, you don't really wanna crawl around attics.
At that time, I'd be willing to do anything to make a little money without a high school.
I mean, say that you're a kid in in high school and you wanna learn plumbing. You've got a resource that you can take to s- after you get out of high school. You know the basics of plumbing. I'm not saying you know everything, but you'll get a job. And you'll be able to understudy from somebody that can teach you the rest of it. You can step in and start helping out. And we need to make sure we make these kids contributors to society. Because that's that's what America's all about.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise, what are they doing? I I know.
They're making YouTube videos and getting millions of dollars, which is bull crap.
And 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 that's exactly it, is that they're them fed these false dreams of, I I can make money off of YouTube videos or playing video games.
Or I can be a professional gamer.
There are people that can do that, but that's still such a small percentage. It'd be like me thinking that I'm gonna get into disc golf today and I'm gonna be a pro. The number of people that can really truly play at a high professional level is so small.
Parents, stop telling kids that they can be whatever they wanna be.
That's big. That's big.
Tell, give them some life.
Some realism.
Yeah, you're gonna work, you're gonna have some bills, you're gonna have to pay them. This is how you learn how to do your money. This is the ti- I'm not saying put them in a box. To to be a professional gamer, it's more of a chance for you to be in the NFL. I ain't gonna be in the NFL, so I definitely ain't gonna be a gamer.
Also, this, I can be in the NFL so long as it's like sitting down somewhere not doing anything.
And 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 the pastor in me says, please stop using the, you can do all things through Christ. I mean, I just like.
You have to find your gift, which is the big thing. Kids don't know what they're gifted in. You need to find your gift and you need to drive toward it.
And that's where parents have got, like, because my wife and I talk all the time, we're like, we gotta get our kids out and about, find something that they they gravitate to. Somewhere so we can start empowering that. Because teachers can't do that with kids. Teachers can't take kids around the community and find something that sparks their interest and then feeds that. Because teachers can't do that with kids. Teachers can't take kids around the community and find something that sparks their interest and then feeds that. Because they're stuck teaching them how to pass a state test.
That was one of the great things about homeschooling. Eh we we started tapping into what what it is that interests our daughter. And I I'm I made whatever additional curriculum that we had to cover somehow incorporated into what she was most interested in.
That's cool.
So like, you know, when you're talking about math and she's wanting to go to pastry school, there's math, there's lots of math.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of practical math. And and so, you know, eh it was very easy to be able to incorporate some of that stuff.
Even harder, there's fractions in baking.
Right.
And everybody hates fractions.
Fractions, uh and word problems, be- because really honestly, that's what every math problem is, is really a word problem. All of life is is basically a word problem. And and once, once she began to see it that way, then she began to understand and say. Okay, so actually I'm learning practical life skills this way.
Yeah.
And and then she gravitated more toward it.
The biggest thing the kids say in high school is, how am I gonna use this in real life?
Exactly, yeah.
There's one time from from beyond pre-algebra. Beyond pre-algebra, there was one thing that I saw that I actually used later in life, but that was in a chemistry class. And that was a quadratic formula. That was it.
Yeah.
Well, no, correction, the Pythagorean theorem is used in carpentry a lot. They do use that a lot. But aside from that, I was like, I've I don't remember any of this. I've never had to see, I've never seen it before.
Yeah.
Never had to deal with it before. I don't know anybody on a personal level, except for pharmacists to use some mathematics for stuff, but it's like.
I'm willing to bet that most folks in construction don't even know that they're using the Pythagorean theorem.
They 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 don't know what it's called, but they use the math.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, we're an hour into it. I I feel like we could keep going.
An hour?
We're at fifty one minutes.
Just in this segment.
Just in this segment.
Yep.
Yeah, it went by so fast, you just, you didn't realize it.
Yeah.
You thought five minutes went by.
Well, when you're passionate about something, it's easy to talk about it.
That's true, that's true.
So I I felt like between Cub Scouts, between having kids, between managing a budget for for the church.
You need something more to do.
Well, yeah, but you know.
All that helps you.
Yeah, God has placed me in twenty twenty one to serve for school board in twenty twenty two.
Yeah, and I'd say, I've always said, and I think the same thing goes for anybody, um not that presidents run anything really. Uh but I think knowing how business works and knowing how to balance a checkbook. Are two extremely important things for anybody in public office.
Yep.
Uh and you got both of those.
Yeah.
So that's great.
And I'm willing to listen, which is a big deal.
That's huge.
On your campaign trail, have some duct tape in your hand. It's just hold it up every time you turn around. People ask what it's for, put it on your mouth and say.
Yep.
Alright, well Kevin, we appreciate you being on the show, man.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um it's been good. Uh hopefully we can get get you back on sometime soon to chop it up about whatever else we talk about.
Maybe I'll watch Spider-Man. I'll come back and we'll talk.
Well, Sean's already eh eh over it now. You and I could talk about it.
I said maybe.
No, no, he he he'll just come back on the show just to say, Sean, you were right. And and I'm used to hearing that, so it's okay.
From who?
Everybody.
Hmm.
Including you.
Wake up, wake up, wake up.
It's alright, you can admit it.
So uh so everybody, thank y'all so much for tuning in. We wanna thank our sponsors, uh newly sponsor. I think it was from the last episode, actually. Uh we got Sam Blackwell, Jason Motley and Purely Bachelorette, uh Ashley Court. I'm not sure if it was just a Ashley Court uh Patreon sponsor, but I know she has Bachelor. Uh Purely Bachelorette as a business, so go check out Purely Bachelorette if you uh if you know somebody who's having a bachelorette party and you wanna do it in a clean. Christian sense. Um yeah, so uh go check them out. Uh if you wanna support the show, you can, patreon.com slash Solomon Sports Podcast. There's a link. In the podcast description and on the YouTube channel. Uh we also got some merchant stuff too, if you wanna purchase some of that to help support the show.
It's on Teespring.
Yeah, yeah. So all of the links are in the description for all that good stuff. Uh we're ending the show with brutality.
Yeah.
Brutality.
Yep, their latest single, Nose Dive.
Absolutely. So we'll be back in a couple weeks. Make sure you go watch Spider-Man, Hawkeye, The Matrix and uh the Book of Boba Fett. And we'll see you next time.
Peace.